Good morning and welcome to the May 13th Special Budget Study Meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Sanani. Can we have the report?
The agenda for the May 13th, 2014 Special Public Meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, May 8th, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. There are two items before you today. One is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding Budget Study Session for Fiscal Year 2014-15, Proposed New Fees, Proposed Fee Increases/Decreases, Capital Improvement Program, GWP Capital Improvement Program, and Budget Wrap-Up. Two is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Update on Water Rates and Request for Authorization to Commence the Proposition 218 Notice and Hearing Process for the Purpose of Adopting New Water Rates in Order to Correct Errors in the労 calculation of the Water Rates Adopted in April 2012. Two A is Motion Authorizing Staff to Commence with the Proposition 218 Notice and Hearing Process.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. We have a lot of material, much of it you've seen, but it's assembled all here, and so, with no further ado, we'll jump right in because we need to get through all of it this morning. So, we talked about CIP, we talked about GWP's Capital Improvement Program, and then, as you heard, also looking at GWP Water and the fix for the water rate structure and options for a new water plan going forward. The tail of the tape, such as it is, is a very robust capital program on the city side, such that we are looking at the new library, Central Library remodel, Fire Station 29 remodel, some miscellaneous types of work and jobs. Then, on the GWP side, I'm sorry, also, street, transit, and sewer work. And then, on the GWP side, a host of investments based on the capital improvement programs already approved by the council with respect to the bond issues that were done this past year and a half, two years, and then, also looking at power management. And then, we'll jump into the discussion on GWP Water. So, a whole ton of stuff that we can go through. What you see here in these two slides, when you talk about the general fund, we have different CIP funds in the general fund. You see it here, broken out through the projects that we have that are grant-funded, that are not grant-funded, and then, we have our CDBG CIP, we have Parks Mitigation Fee, Quimby CIP reimbursement for grants that occur out of that department, and then, the Recreation Fund. So, $7.1 million here in the general fund, $2.7 million here, Community Services and Parks, a very small program in D-LAC for this coming year. Public Works, as I said, very robust, $31.5 million, a lot of that happening in the sewer fund, and then Streets and the Transit Utility Fund. So, very quickly, this is something that we talk about with some degree of regularity. Historically, we had been putting a good deal of money. Glendale had been rather affluent in terms of the monies that had flowed to it in the last generation. When you look at 50% of our sales tax, about $15 million a year, going straight into general fund CIP, Fund 401. And then, as time went on through the 2000s, that percentage dropped by, down to 14%. And then, when the Great Recession hit, we actually got to a point where it was zero. We are now very slowly clawing our way back, where we are putting 1% into CIP, to the general fund CIP, followed by the increase, as you saw in our five-year financial forecast, getting to 2% of sales tax, or the equivalent thereof, about $600,000 or $900,000 by that 21-22 fiscal year. And again, this is just the general fund CIP, not any of our enterprise funds. What you see here is the full, the proposed program for general fund, where we have the $5 million for the, that is the transfer in from reserves to do the library renovation project. We do move money through this fund for the landfill closeout, the $2 million that goes to Fund 403, and then, the additional $1 million for Fire Station 29 remodel, for the living spaces, dormitories, and offices. The budget summary, as you see, by the end of this coming fiscal year, will have $533,000 in this budget, in this fund. However, about $400,000 of that is reserved for public education and government, public access, education, government capital, that needs to be used for GTV6 capital expenditures. That would leave you available $135,000. In terms of the projects that you see, again, Fire Station 29, a billion dollars. When you look at rather small, a rather small program in Public Works that is non-enterprise-related, the ADA upgrades, signal power, and the project management staff that is assigned to capital improvement projects. Here, Rock Haven Maintenance at $30,000 in CSP. You see the unanticipated repairs that always come up with all of our 30-plus parks, the lighting replacement here at Dunsmore, and then, the demolition of the bathroom up above Grand Park Library and Art Center that has to be done as it was hit by a tree. It had been decommissioned, and at this point, just needs to be removed. Yes, sir?
How, sort of off the direct topic, but how much material is there? Because I was going to ask you to slow it down just a little bit.
There's a lot of material. So, if you have questions...
Can you keep going? I mean, I'm talking about your presentation...
A lot of material.
Once I see what you're talking about, your two lines past the...
Then, by all means, we...
Slow it down just a bit?
Surely, sir.
I'll cut my comments this time.
Okay.
But, just so I can...
How about increasing your retention?
I'm, it's, we're zooming here, we're zooming, but I just, I know there's a lot of material. That's the only reason I was just asking.
Would you like to go back to something?
No, don't back up, but just a tiny bit slower. Maybe give us a pause when you're flipping the screenshots.
Five million. Just goofing, I'm sorry, sir. I had to do it, I'm sorry, it's early.
That's how, that's how our brains are functioning this morning, actually. That's me.
I'm just goofing. $5 million for Central Library renovation. See, look at, we'll get the sleeping giant, I'm sorry. Branch library work. The takeaway here is $7.1 million. When we have all the projects in the other fund here, the grant projects, these are separate from the fund I just went through, this is, or this is a different account within there, where we talk about grant-funded CIP programs. And as you can see, we have spent a good chunk of dough. A lot of these, the traffic signal grants, are very old grants that we are just now closing out. These are monies that we have gotten through the good work of this council and previous councils to improve any number of areas around town. However, we are closing those grants out. There is nothing here on this side for the proposed, or for the coming fiscal year. Maryland Mini Park, again, grant-funded, we're closing that out. That'll be done, hopefully, this summer, I believe. Getting the nod from Jess. And then, the Outfall Bridge, we have grant money to do the programming, planning for that, almost a million dollars, that will be done, hopefully, this summer, maybe a little bit of a carryover into next year. Yes, sir?
So, with these grant projects, I mean, it's safe to say that if we didn't receive these grants, these would be, in the overall scheme of things, down the list of improvements we would be doing?
Yes, sir.
Just because there's so much of a demand on the current CIP budget?
Yes, sir. So, we look at our other funds. We have Community Services and Parks, I showed you the summary previously of all of these. And I think the takeaway here is to look at all of the different funds that we have, separate and apart from Fund 401, which is what people generally think about when they think of general, the City of Glendale CIP program. But, as you know, the large chunk of our CIP program resides here in Public Works. So, again, Community Services and Parks, the money going into next year, the Palmer Park improvements, we're doing some of that work this year, appropriating money for next year, $253,000 out of CDBG monies, and that's coupled together with other funding sources. We have Parks Mitigation, so Planning and Design Studies, and Urban and Natural Trails, we have those funds for those two efforts. As we close out, the big one here is the Duke Mason Nature Educational Center. Also looking at the rest of Fund 405, we have the Central Park Plaza and Stengel Field Rehab Design Construction. As you know, we're partnering with the Unified School District there to give Stengel a new lease on life, and also, Brand Park Signs, that's the last element of the Brand Library and Art Center project. Total here is $760,000. Use of Quimby monies, nothing in the coming year, the CIP reimbursement for Palmer Park, $350,000. In the Recreation Funds, some pretty interesting stuff. This is our enterprise fund, that we build up reserves from the use and programming of our fields, and then spend them on public improvements. The big takeaway here, up at the Sports Complex, replacing, installing artificial turf, $1.1 million. It is expensive, but it lasts a good long time and takes the amount of wear and tear that you see up there each and every weekend and during the week. So, total Community Services and Parks CIP, $2.7 million for the coming fiscal year.
Wasn't the school district going to be paying for the, what was our agreement with them? They were only going to manage and maintain, we were going to do the capital improvements?
We were, well, they would do the restoration, we have to do the demolition of the existing clubhouse because it is red-tagged, and so, once we get to that point, whatever gets built in its place is on their dime.
So, that, that $300,000 is the demolition...
Is the demolition remediation.
...framing and setting up.
Yes, sir, there's asbestos in there, and there's a few other things that'll cause us to, and, because some of it is semi-subterranean, the compacting and everything else that goes along with that. Recreation, we will talk, library, as I say, very small amount, collection additions, but really, Public Works is, as I say, where we live. So, in the grant funds, as we mentioned, not a whole lot going on. However, in our local return, for the Beeline Maintenance and Operation Facility, $4.9 million, a very sizable investment indeed. We have some holdover money here for the SR134 Glendale Off-Ramp Interchange. And when we look here at, again, the regional return for Measure R Fund 255, up at Ocean View, there's a traffic signal for $600,000, and Verdugo Road Traffic Signals, another $600,000, subtotal $2.4 million here. We'll have about $250,000 of the refurbishment of the Transportation Center using Prop C Local Return monies. We have the, another infusion of money here for Beeline Maintenance, and we have the state gas tax, street resurfacing. It's probably worth noting, a lot of cities use their gas tax monies, or a good portion of it, on staffing. We put it out into the streets by doing street replacement and resurfacing programs. We also have some, about a million dollars for gutter construction, street reconstruction programs. When you look at the street tree maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, and slurry seal, $5 million going directly into the infrastructure out in the community. So, as I say, if you see a street out there that is alligatored and potholed, odds are it's on a list to be renovated and resurfaced in the coming year. Not a whole lot going on with the reimbursement funds. We had some grants there, those grants, especially up in Montrose, those will be closed out this year. And then, in the parking fund, we have a good deal of activity, and some work coming forward with LED lights, and then, lighting upgrade up at Brand Park as well, so about $1.1 million total. A big chunk of our investment this year is coming in the sewer fund, wanting to make sure that we stay current on all of our capital replacement. We just have a number of things that are going on, from the reconstruction program, wastewater capacity improvements, but especially, our investment at Hyperion Waste System, and then over at Lag Whip, 5.5, $6 million and 5.5, respectively. We are owners in that system, and with the ownership goes the obligation to maintain.
Is this going to keep us from getting slammed with fines over, with the new regulations coming in about wastewater and stormwater?
Stormwater, not really. Sue-sump, we have to maintain our sue-sump requirements regardless. This is the good work that we basically have to do. The one thing that you continue to hear about is NPDS wastewater, that would not be impacted by this. So, for a total of a little over $13 million going in, so, again, $31 million total for Public Works. By way of summary, you can see, again, Fire Station 29, general fund, Public Works versus the enterprise funds, some limited work in Community Services and Parks, and Library Arts and Culture, again, 500,000, or 5 million of this is the Central Library Project, that is the Keystone Project for the coming year. And when you get into all of our, the other funds, Community Services and Parks, 1.1 of this is the turf replacement, and we just walked through Public Works, where we have a very significant investment coming through, for a grand total of $41 million in infrastructure investment in the community.
Is the, is the Sports Complex profitable operation, or no?
I wouldn't call it profitable. Does it generate revenue for its capital replacement? Yes.
It does, okay.
So, I'll go relatively quickly through GWP, because you've seen most of this and fairly recently with the electric utility, with the five-year capital plan that was predicated, the bond issues, respectively, were predicated upon. The takeaway here, and I'm sorry for this, but you have this slide, the big number here is $63.9 million. You could see that. That carries us forward through the next several years as we build up for future appropriations for additional investments in our electric distribution system. The reason for that is because you have approved, as part of your five-year program, these capital improvements, and you see them going out through the years, through the various fiscal years of these next five. The five-year totals here on the right side, and then, the rationale behind the investment, everything from reliability to, in this case, customer-paid types of capital investments, and also mandated, some things that we just have to do as an electric utility. The 12KB conversion certainly is something that we've keyed upon, and especially, the Grandview Substation rebuild, that'll take place over the coming 24 months, that secures our west and northwest neighborhoods for the long term. Page two, and ultimately, page three of these investments, you can see, at the end of the day, we're looking at the bond-funded amounts, as well as money that we'll be saving, and we're saving for capital investment here, for a total, grand, five-year total of $77 million. Keep in mind, this is separate from power management projects, and we've talked about power management and the replacement of Grayson. And as I mentioned last week, we would hope to be in a repower situation with Grayson here in fiscal years 1617 through 1819, which means that the investments that you would see here for the control systems, for Unit 5 auxiliary transformers, those may or may not have to be expended depending on where we are in the scope of that repower. The first step will be hiring the owner's engineer, and then, after we bring on the owner engineer, then we move forward with a very exhaustive procurement process that would allow a design builder to come in and help define what happens and what the ultimate megawatt delivery system would be at, capacity would be at Grayson. So, interestingly enough, Grayson, even maintaining slightly increased megawattage output, would, could be done on a portion of the footprint that is currently our Grayson Power Plant, just because the technology has evolved to that degree. So, as you see, power management, these are all the different things that Mr. Zern and Mr. Lins can certainly speak to if you have questions, but again, I want you to take away the fact that the items here and the out-years of our capital improvement program may or may not have to be done. I believe Unit 9 is our most recent unit. That one, in all likelihood, stays as part of the repower, but everything else is certainly fair game, should the council move forward with that repowering program. Yes, sir?
So, it's a lot of money that we're putting into Grayson. Can the city maintain a power department without having the power plant?
Yes. There are some cities that, that deliver and transmit electricity, but do not generate electricity.
What I would like, at some future date, would be a cost-benefit analysis of the maintenance and operation of the Grayson plant.
And you will get all that, excuse me, Mr. Najarian, you'll get all that as we come before you with the initiation of the repower. So, that, that should probably come to you sometime, hopefully, end of next month, you'll see the kickoff, and we'll do the Integrated Resource Plan, along with retaining the owner's engineer, and we will go through the plethora of the gamut. Do we have no local power generation? We buy everything, and the pros and cons to that, all the way up to maybe overbuilding and selling power generated here.
Just a follow-up question to that. We're talking about doing waste of energy...
Yes.
...as Shoal. Do we need Grayson for that?
We don't necessarily need Grayson for that, but it certainly is nice to have those two connected. Under current regulations, if we put into place some cleanup measures for the landfill gas, we can actually introduce that into the Southern California Gas Pipeline and get the credit for biogas that way, so it doesn't necessarily have to go to Grayson, can go to magnolia, for instance. Magnolia can burn that.
When you come back with that analysis, can you give us, not now, obviously, but can you give us more of an explanation about that, about what the options are and what the different costs would be, and also, if we eventually move to some sort of higher, high-tech, you know, whether it's incineration or whatever it is, whether, then, we would need Grayson?
Absolutely.
So, we have all of our future options and needs on the table?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Kungfer?
And I assume an analysis will include potential catastrophic issues throughout Southern California?
Yes, yes, preparing for something that hopefully doesn't happen again, but songs is one example, where you find a lot of people now at the mercy of the market because San Onofre has been closed. You see other plants popping up, or trying to pop up, but having difficulty because of air resource requirements. It's a very valuable resource, but we'll show you that, and we'll show you the pros and cons of that, and why we think it's good to have that as part of an overall portfolio. So, effectively, $6.6 million, and then, I think that we're close to nine on 1516, $5.2 million, respectively, over the coming fiscal years, for total investments of $30, $25, $20, almost $22 million in the respective next three years in GWP Electric. Again, making good on the commitment to invest in the infrastructure and improve service delivery. So, here is the summary, cash balances, and keep in mind, a big chunk of this is bond cash, $132 million. Water, very quickly, is also quite busy. You'll see here across the fiscal years, and then, the five-year totals, $20 million for 1415, and then, dropping off to 8.55, $3.9 million. Total investment, $44.7 over these coming five years. These are all the projects that you've seen, and again, the reasoning behind them, just the notion of making sure that we are improving and maintaining the reliability of our delivery system, as well as all of our reservoirs, is critically important to us. So, what you see across the bottom is all of our pumping capacity. What you see here is water quality in the plants, to make sure that water quality is maintained. A good deal of these are reliability, as well as state mandates. WTR has to do, these are our programs for tanks and reservoirs, actually, the capacity for the water system, and as opposed to WMR, which is our water main replacement. And so, you can see that over the coming years, especially here, sustained in the out-years, doing a lot of work, first and foremost, with Adams Hill, making good on that commitment, with $2.4 million being expanded in the coming fiscal year, but $3 million, another $3.3 million, and so on, going throughout the next several years on our water delivery system. Water main replacement, as you saw last week, this year, we did have an increase in water main breaks, so, again, the idea that this is timed quite well is a credit to the council's willingness to fund these programs. So, the potable water transmission and distribution, you could see, this is a big chunk of our effort in the first year, $11.2 million, and then stabilizes to $3 million, three and a half, over the coming several years. When we talk about all of our projects, total utility capital for GWP Water, $20 million, and then, leveling off to eight, to five, and then, we stay at about five and six million as we move forward with GWP Water and stabilizing the utility. Again, here, the tail of the tape is negative cash. That number had been close to double that amount. We have been bringing that into alignment, and the total cash balance, offset by the cash, the reserve deficit, $16.5 million. Bond proceeds are a big element of that cash, but that has to be spent on the projects that we have committed to.
So, when you say cash reserve deficit, is that a negative number, or that's below the limit that we...
That is a negative number.
That is a negative number.
GWP Water owes GWP Electric $10.2 million.
And so, when would that be paid back?
Well, foreshadowing the discussion later on today, we were hoping to have that paid back, and well on the way, actually, paid back already, and well on the way towards establishing a healthy reserve. At this point, that number, depending on what options the council wants to consider, could take anywhere from two to five years. That's CIP. You've seen it, a good chunk of it previously, you saw a lot of it last week, but just, this is the recapping of all this, and again, the tail of the tape is, library, Fire Station 29, lot of street, sewer, and transit facility work, and a lot of electrical and water distribution work. Then, we will transition over to our fees and charges. This is a lot of material, but I don't want you to be overwhelmed by the material that you have. You all received a booklet like this over the weekend, and I know you read it cover to cover, and now, we're going to ask you to read it again, cover to cover, because today is really about framing the issue of fees and charges, and then, inviting the council to give us your comments over the coming weeks, so that we can incorporate that into the fee schedule that would be considered by the council as part of the budget. So, what you have here is the actual fee study, that incorporates all of our existing fees, as well as looks at new fees. So, we'll talk very quickly about the guidance, why we're doing this, how we do this, the approach and methodology, look at the results of the study, and then, examine what the staff recommendations are, and wrap up from there, and then, we'll talk about GWP Water and be done. But generally, a quick history lesson, in the wake of Prop 13, cities started to migrate towards user fees. Assessment districts, along comes Prop 218, that says, nope, you can't do that without a vote of the people if it's a property-related fee, it has to be tied to the cost of providing the service, and potentially, depending on the characterization of the fee, be voted on by property owners. Government code does say that you can only charge reasonably what it costs you to provide the service, and break out between what is a private benefit, what is a public benefit. Prop 26 comes along to close some of the loopholes that were found inside of Prop 218, and essentially outlines what seven of these exemptions are. All fees are taxes, effectively, unless they fall under one of these categories, and you'll see a lot of what we're talking about today are, meet these tests. We are looking at fees for service, for private benefits. So, number one, specific benefit privilege, i.e., permits, franchises, et cetera, and you can read all the way down, all the way through fines and penalties. Those are specifically by Prop 26, not taxes. So, with that as a foundation, let's talk about the user study, the user fee study. We have user fees, and these are charged to the individual that has a, drives a private benefit from services that we provide, and again, not a tax, the services discretionary activity requested by the payer. These are distinct from the types of governmental services that are usually associated with municipal entities like Glendale. Every several years, we do a, beginning in 2011, our best management practice is to do a fee study, and to make sure that we are indeed charging not any more than what the code would allow, but to make sure that as a matter of business, we're recouping that which we can, or at least, we're aware of what our costs are. So, we do a cost study and a fee study at the same time. Here, you see the depiction of what user fees would tend to cover, and what taxes, a general fund, GF, would tend to cover. And then, the mix in between, because this... And then the mix in between, because this gray area is where we end up having a good deal of discussion. So by way of examples, here on user fees, those would be your building permits and some recreation classes, contract classes and what have you. Here, things that have, that are supported by taxes but also supported by user fees could be youth programs. So maybe it is a youth recreation program where the city council sees a benefit and investing in that program and not defraying the full cost of that program onto the users because having kids engaged in youth sports after school is seen as a positive. Then you have things that where there's, go from some public benefit to some private benefit. This might be something like historic preservation where we're trying to encourage an activity so the city would subsidize that activity to get people to do what you want them to do, in this case, preserve historic buildings. Finally, you get to programs that are 100% general public benefit, and those are supported by taxes, like police patrols. So as I mentioned earlier, we did our first-ever fee study in 2011, had that approved for the 1112 budget. And every three to five years, as a good management practice, we tend to bring the fee, we want to be able to bring the fee study back. It's a good investment to make sure that we are in alignment with our costs. So we have, began with a RFP process, selected a firm, ultimately geared around this budget study session, and based on the comments you will give us today and over the ensuing days and week, we would like to have that all plugged in for the June 20 hearing in time for the, or for the May 20 hearing in time for the June 3 adoption. We had of our departments, Public Works, Community Development, Fire and Police, of note, Library Arts and Culture and CSP did not, and GWP with the work that was going on with the COSA, we did not include GWP here. What we are looking at primarily are these four departments and their respective divisions. It should be noted too, D-LAC and CSP are, as much as anybody else, they are sensitive, perhaps more so than anybody else, they're sensitive to the marketplace. Somebody wants to rent one of our facilities, you know, we have to make sure that we are attractively priced, contract classes, things like that, as well as these being the quality of life services that city councils typically will subsidize for the benefit of the overall quality of life in the community. In terms of objectives, what does the cost study look at? Well, again, we want to make sure that we call things by their right names, as Confucius once stated, that would be the beginning of wisdom. And so we want to understand what the transparent, we have objective and transparent fee information, so it is what it is, no hiding from the data and presenting it in such a way that everybody can understand. Understand what our full cost is, not just the one person that touches a piece of paper, but everything it takes to keep that one person out in the field, such as it is, doing that good work. We want to make sure that we have a rational basis for setting those fees, so we're being intellectually honest about it, that there, understand that when there are subsidies, why are there subsidies and what does it mean downstream? Understand what our principles are for the user fees, the law that all of this rests upon, make sure that it's fair and equitable, that we're compliant with state law, and that we actually can simplify where possible. This flowchart that you have in your presentation talks about the process. We collect data, we define what the costs are, direct and indirect costs. So direct costs would be the staff that provides it. Indirect costs are the, is the overhead perhaps that keeps them providing that level of service? We, I'm sorry, not the overhead, we would have all the supervision, everything else that goes into making sure that that person operates. Then we allocate overhead costs. Then we calculate the sum of all of this as a full cost, and then we have the fee structure, and then we move forward with, bring it to you to actually make the policy as to what you hope to charge. So cost analysis and fee design, those are the two elements of the document before you. So full cost is everything, the direct salaries and benefits, services and supplies, supervision and support, that's that indirect part, the departmental administration, indirect activities, interdepartmental support, citywide administration.
So just so I'm clear on how that's allocated, when a, oh, I don't know, when a developer gets before us and says, I've paid 3 million dollars to the city for this project, that, according to that schematic, it's covering salaries, services, supplies generally?
It could.
Can we profit off a permit?
You cannot profit off a permit.
Only recover your costs.
You would recover your cost, but, but I think to your point, we may not be charging them the fully burdened rate for every bit of service that we're providing.
Okay. So, right.
That developer is, I'm sorry.
I guess the feeling is by those, and from the very big to the very small, let's say you want to get a permit for your hot water tank and you pay 70 bucks, they're saying, oh, the city's profiting off me. Well, that is, cannot be a profit.
True.
It can only cover the salaries, benefits, services and supplies, and you're saying, we're not even covering all of that?
Not necessarily.
In many instances, we're not.
And I would go further to say that the city council in setting policy could say that it is, it is, it is a public benefit to have all of our residents strap their water heaters in. And so we're, it may cost us 200 dollars to provide that service inspection, that permit, but we are going to charge 50 dollars because that's, there's an element of public benefit there. That's the policymaking question that you will have to decide.
Okay, got it.
Just so that I understand correctly, so would, that, what you just said, does that apply to developer fees that they, that they have to pay?
It can.
It could.
It can. So if you were in the midst of, take your development impact.
But even, even with the new scheme, the one that hasn't really kicked in yet, even with that, they're still underpaying for the services that they're getting?
Well, the, you're talking about the development impact fees?
Yes.
That would be separate and apart from the, the permit fees that we're talking about here. If we were trying to encourage a certain type of development, you might say, for that type of development, we don't want to charge the fully burdened rate. But on other types of development, so for example, you'll see in just a second, maybe you want to, on, on single-family homes, not charge the fully burdened cost, but on 25-story steel-framed high-rises, you want to charge the fully burdened cost because you're trying to, to push a certain type of land use decision-making. You can do that as this policy.
Can I just say, going before, before we get there, that that is something that I would support. I think it's one thing to have somebody building a big building in the downtown, but someone who's living in a 1,500-square-foot house that wants to redo their bathroom, I don't think that we should slam them with the full cost. I think we can make that difference and.
And we should.
And we should make that difference.
Yes, yes, absolutely, because you hear all the time, single-family homes are doing some type, some type of renovation project and they end up paying, you know, tens of thousand dollars in, in fees, which represents a huge portion when compared to the actual amount of money they're spending on the house itself. Well, that, that, you don't want to burden them any more than that, but where it comes to a, to a, to a building with a large number of apartments, commercial development, it's a completely different ballgame.
Not only that, but I think that existing buildings, commercial buildings that are doing health and safety upgrades or sustainability upgrades, also, we should try to encourage that by not charging full freight, particularly sustainability upgrades. So if someone's putting on solar, if they're replacing an old HVAC with an energy-efficient one. Now, I know that there are some rebates, so we need to be careful that they're not sort of profiting or getting things for free, but we don't want to make it so expensive that we don't, that people end up leaving old buildings that are, you know, water and energy hogs, so.
That is essentially.
I know we've broken that out somewhere in there, but when it comes back, I would like to see that broken down so that we know how that works. Again, we need to be careful because with the rebates, I mean, we want to encourage people to do things, but we don't want it to be completely free necessarily for people because they're going to be getting the benefit of paying less water, paying less electricity and all of that. So we need to, we need to kind of know what some of those rebates are, I think, when we set those fees.
Yes, ma'am. So yeah, the, you have the, everything that you are talking about is well within your purview and within the context of the study. So we look at the fully burdened rate, the estimated time to complete that, broken out, I believe, to the half hour or 15 minute. Armin? 15 minute, I'm sorry. So we do billable hours by 15-minute increments then. We have the estimated time and then any materials that goes along with that, that sets the maximum, again, maximum fee amount, the ceiling fee amount. So I'll give you just a quick calculation, just so you see how the whole thing fits together. If somebody wants to take out a sidewalk dining permit, the idea being that they can do seating out on the sidewalk and add to the ambiance in the street, but also effectively increase the, the leasable square footage of their restaurant, such as it is. So it takes a GIS analyst this amount of time, 30 minutes to process the application, and you can see from the research investigation plan review, this, that, the other, down, you know, 15-minute increments, 45-minute increments. Total amount of time it takes that GIS analyst, three hours, three and three-quarter hours, half an hour for the principal civil engineer to go through the document and report, to review it, and then the city engineer will give final sign-off, taking about 15 minutes. So here you see the fully burdened rate calculated under this formula. Fully burdened rate for all three multiplied by the amount of time it takes them, so time times rate equals total cost come across, so the, the actual cost is 797 dollars and 10 cents. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody is making 797 dollars and 10 cents, it doesn't even mean that these folks are making these hourly rates. This is their hourly rate plus all the indirect support, plus the overhead, plus the supplies, plus everything it goes to put that person in the field, that's the hourly rate, this is the combined total cost, and the other support cost, 710, the total is 80420. Now, when you hear the full cost is 80420, our current fee is 150. Why is it 150? Because we are trying to encourage the type of ambiance and excitement and dynamic interaction that occurs when you have sidewalk dining out on the street. And so we are basically subsidizing the city through the general fund, not any other rate payer, as subsidizing this activity.
Not the city, it's the taxpayers.
No.
Isn't it the taxpayers?
Well, the taxpayers, but not, it isn't as though if you have a rate payer and I pay more because you pay less, we're just collecting less. So the general fund, the city.
But it ultimately is paid for by the taxpayers.
But we just have to be careful in the context of 26 and 218, that it's not other permit payers, not other rate payers. So the taxpayers, I hear exactly what you're saying, but we just have to be.
We're not printing money, so it's coming from somewhere.
So the full cost.
Look, I mean, the way I look at fees and permits, et cetera, it is money that we would not receive. Let's take the water heater we were talking about. If that fee is so high, then people are not going to contact the city, that money is gone forever. So I think setting all permits and fees at, at just the right, there was a famous, or I remember an episode from Taxi where Jim burnt some apartment down, and the little guy, Danny DeVito, had to arrive at just that right amount.
Right.
So to me, I just consider it all money coming into the city, and I don't look on it as, you know, we're subsidizing half of it or it's money that we ordinarily would not be able to use.
And to the extent that how you set those fees impacts behavior. So if you were to charge, I'd venture a guess that if you charged somebody 804 dollars for a sidewalk dining permit, nobody would want sidewalk dining permits.
Is that per ta, per table or is that just?
That's for a permit.
Per permit.
Okay, so if they were putting 15 tables out there, wouldn't make a difference?
Yeah.
Which most people can't, so this is Patty, okay.
So this, we take into consideration the room, the ADA and all of that.
And by the way, I agree with Mr. Quintero. I just want to be clear about that this is not money that we're printing.
No.
It has to come from somewhere else, from other programs, that kind of thing, so that people understand. Sometimes I think there's a feeling that there's this, we're sitting literally on this giant pot of money that we can just reach down and grab. But I agree with Mr. Quintero, you want to set them just at the right place.
As do we, and that's why the proposed fee is going up to 200 and not to 800.
Right.
Right? And then you still have to weigh that as a policymaker against what the private benefit is for that, for that, that business, right? Because if they were going to lease out that space, it may go for X number of dollars, triple net or whatever.
Absolutely.
So you're trying to find balance throughout all of this, trying to encourage some activities and not others, and differentiate between what is a private benefit, what is a public benefit. So you can see over the, the volume, actual, how many permits we may process, what ultimately the revenues are. So we have the fully burdened rate, this example, I think we've probably killed this one to death. So we'll talk about the fee study results. We generate about 5.2 million dollars in fees right now. There is about, under current circumstances, about 9.9 million dollars that could be collected. However, we believe that it probably wouldn't be realized for some of the reasons that we've already discussed. When we look towards the idea of trying to increase fee levels, trying to make sure that we, we don't kill the golden goose such as it is because we want to encourage some of these types of behaviors, we don't want to overly discourage or be punitive or be viewed as punitive in a perception basis or even legally. Certainly, we want to make sure that we exercise that discretion, we exercise that, that balance. So as I was mentioning, here you have all the, the projected revenue at full cost, 15 million dollars could be realized, at our current fees, 5.2, which means again, 9.9 million dollars is there to be realized. And here along the right, you see from the respective departments where we are currently, what the percentage of recovery is, the recovery rate for, you know, on that projected cost. Building and planning, generally speaking, CDD has done a very good job of making sure that they realize as they get paid for as much as they reasonably can without diminishing the positive aspects of the types of services that they provide. We want folks to do sidewalk, or not sidewalk dining, but historic preservation, we want folks to participate in, in our design review process, things like that. Public Works also does a very good job, and it's no surprise that these are the development services-related departments. Two departments that have, and to a degree, Fire as well, Fire Plan Check, although you'll see in a second, we, there is, lease, interestingly enough, is the department that recoups least of its cost, and as you'll see in the fee study, why that is. So here are some examples. When you look at the grading plan check for Public Works Engineering, current fee is 975, the full cost is 1,900 dollars, which means that, and this is terminology as much as anything else, the quote-unquote subsidy, would be 996 dollars, so a fee recovery rate of 49. False alarms, very interesting here. We, the current fee is 104 dollars, the full cost, when there is an alarm, based on the protocol that we use in sending the vehicles there, the dispatch, the, the time it takes to actually get things done, to secure the location, follow up and follow through, it costs about 762 dollars.
Why don't the, do the, a lot of these alarms are private companies, right? How come they don't have any responsibility for that?
Because at the end of the day, we are the, the Public Safety Department, we are the, the police agency.
Are there private companies that have more alarms than others that just don't do a good job with that? Is there anything we can do about that?
They, we do require them to have permits, and some do and some don't. And what we found in our cost study is that there are some of these companies that don't advise their new client that they need to get a, come in and get a permit from us. So we have a better connection with them and understand what's real and what isn't. Fire system, same thing here. I mean, we, we see that, that there is, recovery is very low. Tobacco retail sales, on the other hand, the fee is 332, it actually costs us 556, and so there is some subsidy, but here you can see where the council is saying, no, we're going to recover more of the, of that cost, and indeed, probably more than that, the cost study being three years old. So this amount may have been a much higher percentage three years ago.
So are we going to be subsidizing tobacco sales?
No, that's my point, is that as we, we do a cost study every several years, we understand what our new costs are as costs go up, and then you ratchet the, the fee up to reflect what our full cost. So again, here, multifamily plumbing, here it's 175, the full cost 217, we're actually recouping 81% of that cost.
Can you discriminate against different uses when you set different fees? Like, like on this one, we, we don't want to encourage tobacco sales and tobacco use, and we want to have a greater percentage of cost recovery. On the other hand, someone that sells, what's a good use that we?
Organic strawberries.
Organic strawberries. We have a very low fee. Can the tobacco guy say, hey, you're discriminating against me based on the nature of my business?
We can differentiate, we would not discriminate, I would prefer to my.
I mean, it is a form of discrimination, but again, you are, as long as you're seeing the cost of service.
That's the deal.
Then you're okay.
Up to that ceiling cost, up to this full cost, this is the, this is the ceiling, you, you have that latitude as a policymaking body.
We have full discretion to do that.
There, there are limits, obviously, and, but I believe generally, yes, there's a significant amount of latitude and discretion in this arena of policymaking.
One more question, then I'll be quiet. Something that I've had complaints about is fees that exceed the cost of doing the work. So I'm going to put a toilet in and it costs me 150 dollars for the toilet and maybe 50 dollars for the plumber, but the fee is 200 dollars. Can we look at some of those lower-cost items?
Can we look at some of those lower-cost items and have some sort of a percentage of cost rather than a flat fee? Because I would guess that unless you're doing a whole bathroom remodel, we're not getting a lot of permits for toilet replacements, because nobody wants to pay the fees. Goes back to Mr. Quintero's point, if you want to have those things permitted, you want to collect some money, better to have something than nothing. Can we look at some of those lower ticket items?
Yes, you can look at those, yes.
So when you go, and I'll let Mr. Higani, no, no, stay, 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 come back. So, not now, but when it comes back, maybe we can look at some of those. Mr. Higani, did you have a...
We actually have looked at those. When we batch them, we, the cost goes down. When it's individual, when the cost is higher, that's really the bottom.
But we can look at them.
Can we look at those so that people, so that we, I mean, are you getting a lot of people coming in just to replace their toilets? Let's be honest.
Not a lot, but once in a while we do, yeah.
Once in a while, but I'm guessing there's probably a lot of it going on out there. So, might be better to look at, I'm just using that as an example, but some of those single things so that people say, ah, it's not so bad, I'll just go and get it permitted. Thanks.
So, since Ms. Friedman's on this example, what's the administrative cost associated with someone replacing their own toilet in their own house?
If they...
Why are we even charging them?
There's a permit.
I mean...
There is, there's a good element of building code that comes into play. Now, do folks call us after they've gone to Home Depot and install their toilet? Sometimes not. Does that happen? I think I would venture a guess that the handful that Mr. Higani is referring to are those folks that are replacing the toilet in the context of a bathroom remodel. That's probably how we see that. But that, the one-offs, probably not so much, but a good deal of things that you say, wow, why do we collect that? It's there in the building code.
I'm just willing to bet that if we look at, you know, percentage-wise, overwhelming majority of toilets that have been replaced in Glendale in the last 15 years, the city hall has not found out about.
I would go further and say that even if you dropped that fee to a dollar, you probably don't really impact the frequency.
Which goes back to my original question, why are we even charging them a fee for that?
Many of the things that you'll see are there in the building code.
Well, the question is, do we really have to inspect it if they have a licensed plumber? I mean, that's the other question.
To, again, and to the extent that they do come in, do the right thing and come in for the permit, then you have a cost to provide that service to...
To inspect it.
That's because you inspect it, but why do we have to, do we have to inspect it if they use a licensed plumber? I mean, do we really have to?
If we are charging a fee, then, you know, there is the cost, and do we have to, Stuart? Yes, we do?
Because I don't, do they really, in all cities, you have to?
There's Jan.
We have to make sure that they have done this if they are paying a permit fee, and if we are issuing a permit, we need to make sure that they have done it according to the code. And then usually we get, especially nowadays, we get several bathrooms, for example. We don't get one or two, usually we get them in series. You want to say something?
Yeah, correct. Basically, building code does require that we issue permits to do virtually anything, unless specifically exempted. A lot of these elements aren't specifically exempted, so based on state law, we are required to issue permits for them.
Are we required to inspect as well, even if they use a licensed plumber or a licensed contractor?
In order for us to final them, we have to have some mechanism to confirm that it was actually installed in compliance with state law. For example, one of the things we need to verify is that they are in fact using the 1.28 gallon per flush toilets now that the state requires be installed, as opposed to the 1.5 that were allowed two years ago.
So it's... Reference to licensed plumbers, I'm sorry, you would be amazed how many times that licensed workers, we still discover that they haven't done things according to code.
So this is a state mandate, this is not something...
State-manded by the building code.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
That explains the absurdity of it.
On the home stretch of this particular item is, again, recapping fairness equity, council policy, what do you want to offset, what do you want to charge the full cost for, the market factors, making sure that we aren't out of sync with the area, the region in general, legal compliance, and depending on what constituencies are most impacted. So you do have options as you look at this big booklet of information. We are providing to you the, an opportunity to look at, we give you the actual cost and that fully burdened cost, and then the opportunity to phase in those fees. So, over a three-year period, or look at the cost recovery levels, you can do it on a percentage basis, as was mentioned earlier. We can look at future updates to make sure, especially when, and I need to emphasize, there are some elements here that you'll see in just a second that are new fees. For those new fees, we would ask and recommend that the council only, that the council agreed to phase those in, so we only look at the year-one cost, not the fully burdened cost, not what is listed as staff recommendation by way of the table that you'll see, but rather to phase those in, and in phasing them in, give us the opportunity to make sure that we got it right vis-à-vis the workload, vis-à-vis how many folks touch the various permits, and ultimately, what the frequency is. So, you'll see that in terms of staff recommendation, there are different types of fees contained in this booklet, and we'll go over that in just a real brief second. There are new fees and restructured fees. In some cases, as was mentioned previously, we have done, we did the original fee study in 2011, and since then, either through technology or through reorganization, we do fees different ways, or there are different mandates that come into play and that dictate how we treat a given application. And so, the increases or decreases were very significant, and so, if something was a rather significant change, we have characterized it as a restructured fee, because it has changed quite considerably from what it used to be. There is increases to existing fees and there's decreases to existing fees. And then there are other fees that you'll see here that are not part of the actual cost study, but that we are asking that you make some alterations to them. Finally, there are CPI roll-ups to the balance of those fees. So, by way of example, these are the new and restructured fees, and as we, I'll direct your attention to your booklet and opening up to any, you can look here, it's tabbed for all the different departments, and if you go to one of the departmental, let's go to Public, this is CDD, Building and Safety. What you'll see here is the description of the fee, you'll see the total cost to provide the service, the current fee, the staff recommendation, and then here in these two sets of columns to the right, you have the staff recommendation phased in over three years, or alternatively, the full cost phased in over three years. And you'll see that consistently throughout all of the tab departments that you see here listed in the fee study. The ones that are highlighted in yellow in your booklet tie back to these examples that we're looking at now. So, for example, we have right-of-way summary, street alley vacation, it's a new fee out of the Department of Public Works, the proposed fee is 67.74. We have low voltage new installation, new fee. CDD in building, fifty, almost $1,600. We have restructured fees and others that you see listed there. We have increases to existing fees, and in your booklet, you'll see them broken out between new fees, fee increases, and then fee decreases. Those are the peach-colored, I think that's peach-colored breaks, salmon-colored, I'm told, breaks that are there on those sheets. And so, again, what we are asking for council, so these are increases to existing fees, as opposed to these are new and restructured fees, so there's no comparison there. Here you'll see construction right-of-way improvements, permit inspection, application fees, Department of Public Works, the full cost $533, the current fee is $58. Here we're recommending, the proposed fee is 533, something that speaks to that private benefit, but there again, council has the option, if you so choose, to phase it in over three years, to set a percentage recovery, and the idea, the current fee being 58, if we phased in this amount here, let me just double-check, I don't want to give the wrong number, Public Works. Year-one of that fee would be, if you look at, if you cross-reference to your booklet, the first year of that fee would be $216. So 58, which is a very low percentage recovery, to 216, which is still less than half. And you can do those types of calculations as you move through. Back to that question of tobacco retail sales, the full cost, 550, almost $556, the current fee, 332, we're recommending $556. So, again, the idea, and then decreases to fees, not everything is going up, some things, again, through technology, through mandate, through reorganization, those fee amounts come down. New fees that are not part of the fee study, for example, at the Brand Library, to rent the mansion for an event or a group kind of event, we are setting that fee based on what the market is and based on what we think will be competitive, and those are those new types of fees not covered in the cost study. Similarly, increases, again, based on, primarily based on market and based on actual cost. Here you have the automated meter, water meter, ball valves, and replacement of the box. This is, this is what our cost is, we're charging 350, this would go to 5. And then for everything else that you would see, not covered in the fee study, so in city clerk's case, it might be filming permits, it might be the publication or the production of requested public records, we're requesting a CPI roll-up, which was 1%. So again, the idea that if you implemented the full staff recommendation over the next 12 to 18 months, as these fees were rolled out and actually accessed by the service-going public, you could realize about $3.2 million. However, if you phased them in, it would be a million dollars, and basically, a million dollars in the next three years to a full recapture of the staff recommendation level of 3.2, so about a million dollars a year. Now, if you did the year-one phase in, but never did year-two or year-three, again, that's council's discretion, but you would have that latitude. What you see, again, for, primarily, these fees impact the general fund as opposed to our, our other enterprise funds.
Can I ask a question? So staff's recommending some fees are charged at the full cost of recovery, others are less than that.
Correct.
Do you, does each department and management and you go through every single fee and talk about what you think would be best for the public, for the payer, all of that?
Unfortunately, yes, only as, as we would recommend to the council.
Right, okay.
So some of those, like you saw the tobacco fee, our staff recommendation is that it goes all the way to the 556, the fully burdened cost.
So how many people are sitting down in that room and talking about these fees?
Well, Armin, how many people are on your committee?
Well, the departments that we've worked with to do the cost study, we had a lot of people involved, from management to the end user, the individuals that actually help the customers to issue those permits, and we've spent hours and hours to identify the time spent providing those services, and then the next level was actually to meet with the managers and the department heads to discuss further. And so, to make sure that we have this best reasonable time estimate that we are actually charging the customer correctly.
So when you make your recommendation, is it with an eye towards getting as much money out of the user as possible? So, how do you do that analysis?
Well, we rely on everybody's expertise, so when we have the departmental meetings, if I'm meeting with the neighborhood services or planning department or engineering department, then everybody just tells us, based on their years of expertise, how long does it take for certain services that they're providing to the public?
So I understand the timing here, but there's another level here, the level that Mr. Quintero was talking about, of setting the right fee.
Right.
When people can afford what they're willing to pay. So you're doing that with each, multiple people are doing that with each and every fee, right?
That's correct, yes.
And also, to look at activities that you might want to encourage as well, I assume?
Certainly, and with the new fees, absolutely, especially because there's nothing to draw from. Fire department has a number of new fees, and so Chief Scoggins and I, up to this morning, were talking about, okay, well, what do you recoup, and how do you set that percentage, especially if it's a brand-new fee? You know, if something is residential plan check, addition, alteration, apartment, condominium, 20 units or less, the cost for that plan check is $478.79, we're recommending 25% recapture, because we want to make sure that we remain attractive, that we remain competitive, and because the sticker shock that that's likely to impact somebody who's submitting an application. Now, council could come back and say, no, you know what, for that kind of project, we think that we don't want to encourage that kind of development, we're going to, we should charge the full freight. And so what we're giving you is our best guess as to, based on experience and based on what we think behavior will change to be by saying, you know, this is the fee amount. And then the one caveat is that on all of our new fees, we're actually recommending as a way to even soften it further, to go with the year-one staff recommendation of phase-in. Not just the yellow highlighted, but for new fees, because we're still making sure that we've never charged before, one, let's be sensitive to the fee payer, and two, let's make sure that we got it just right, we would go with the year-one phase-in.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that people understand that this isn't, we didn't just go through the fees and say, let's raise everything 50%, that it's very cherry-picked, it's been analyzed by lots of people with an eye towards both the users and to everyone else who sort of subsidizes.
And make no mistake, certainly the council will hear from folks who feel abused by a fee increase, but also the people at the counter here. And so, to the extent that Armin's team and the respective departments are saying, okay, how is this going to play out at the development services counter when we hand somebody the bill, the list of fees, and what are they likely to say? And is that reasonable, is it fair, based on those...
Is there ever a hardship exception if somebody comes in and they're elderly, they live in a house that's from the 1920s, they have to do some kind of a...
Can I, I don't mean to interrupt, but are we not going to have a separate session or discussion about each of the, about these fees?
We have...
Maybe we should, because of all the questions that Ms. Friedman's raising, and, and again, I mean, you're, these are recommendations that are based on experience, you know, some analysis that has gone into, the department's gone through them.
You're not going to want to go through all of these fees, there's hundreds and hundreds, but I think, once we look at it, I think we should, things that we want to talk about.
We should revisit, yeah, and any council...
But I think just as an overview, I think this is the time to kind of have some of these answers. So I'm curious about the hardship, is that ever something that comes into play? If someone has a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I'm not saying it should, I'm just kind of curious.
As, there, no, we don't have that.
Okay, so the answer is no.
Okay. To the extent that, to Mayor's point, the purpose of today is to, to reintroduce this big booklet to you, so in the coming days, my expectation, based on interactions with council, are that you'll be scheduling, or we'll be scheduling meetings with you to walk through it.
Excellent.
So next Tuesday night, when the fee schedule comes before you, it will reflect where there's agreement with the recommendation, or there's differentiation, and what you'll discuss next Tuesday night is, okay, we think that this fee should be higher, this fee should be lower, we shouldn't charge this fee. Good. Last but not least, on this particular item, just by way of the universe of fees, 2,100 total city fees, no changes to almost 1,400 of them, where you do see the changes via the fee study, 93 new or restructured fees, 297 increases to existing fees, 51 decreases to existing fees, and then the ones that are outside the fee study, you see 19 new fees, 69 existing fee increases, and just CPI roll-up on 185 of them. So we're touching about a third of the universe of fees that we have, or is what we're recommending. So you have, the alternative is basically a staff recommendation, full cost recovery or other alternatives, and the other alternatives will emanate, I'm sure, based on council briefings and what you would like to see, again, what types of behaviors you would hope to encourage or discourage vis-à-vis the use of fees. Okay?
Questions? Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Question, comments? One, we did not do any other city comparisons, this is all internal to Glendale?
We do have other city comparisons.
Did we use that in establishing any of these fees?
Yes, we did.
Yes. What the staff recommendations are, not establishing what the full cost is, but what the staff recommendations...
Were those items where we do not have currently any cost? I mean, we didn't go through all of these and compare them to other cities.
The ones that are most applicable, and a lot of these are, I mean, building code is the, you know, uniform building code, a lot of the engineering standards are what they are, so I think there is a lot of, a lot of comparison with other agencies that's pretty readily available. Things like the Brand Mansion, for example, we wouldn't be able to compare necessarily directly to.
Well, I'm just saying, the salary structure in different cities are different than ours, so if we're using other cities as a comparison, they could be higher or lower than what our actual studies would indicate internally.
So we would look at their fee amounts, that's a great point, because we would look at other agencies' fee amounts, but would be ideal was for, would be for us to look at other agencies' fee studies and cost studies, and not, not to toot our own horn, but, but our finance department is outstanding in this, and our executive team is outstanding of understanding, kind of confronting those brutal facts of what costs are. So not everybody has a fee study like the one that we've done, that's that comprehensive. Not everybody, as you'll see in a second, has a cost of service analysis for their utility costs. So we were just looking basically at the end result, and... So we're just looking basically at the end result, and those numbers may be completely way off target for the other agencies.
Well, I gather, not to bring it up, but we'll be bringing it up, what Willdan did on the water, this is different because it was all done internally, with staff through a complex, right?
But we did hire a consultant to bring in.
Hire a consultant, but they sat with staffers, that's what I'm getting at.
Armin has lived here for about two months now.
Because there's going to be people that'll come in here and say, I don't believe this report. How could it be? And I guess the answer is, well, we had a consultant leading us through it, but it was driven by taking the steps that had been indicated, identifying what you're doing, the staff level that's doing it and all that, which is an internal thing. So it'd be difficult to pick it apart like you did, like we would the Willdan report, if I'm making myself semi clear.
No, I think I understand that's, and we appreciate that certainly. Yeah, to the extent that we've spent an exhaustive last several months working on this, I think you see the results. We can be confident in the numbers that we have.
Because we will have people in here complaining.
Yeah.
Another fictitious report like the water. So just be prepared. And one last thing is, if I understand it, what we will get for the next weekend will be just these sheets?
That's right, sir. You won't get the full packet. You'll get those summary sheets that you have in front of you.
Just highlighting the changes.
Seven, eight sheets, and then we will study this next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday night is the budget.
Just at night?
Yes, sir.
There'll be no study session in the morning?
Unless council wants another budget study session, then we would do it during the day.
Okay. So how many did you say we are going to change on this last page?
We are doing, I think it was 93 new, is that right?
So it could be a long evening if we start to go through all 93.
Well, and that's why we wanted to provide the primer today, because I think to the extent that everyone understands why and how, those things that really speak to what you want to encourage or discourage will be the areas that council wants to talk about. And the rest of those things that are more, that speak to everyone's interests, those can just be either staff recommended or phased in.
And I just want to make sure, no disrespect to the consultant, I knew he was brought in, but I was talking about the internal mechanism, how they guided us through the process in hundreds and hundreds of fees. So thanks for that. This is a long time coming to have one like this. It's nice to see how many millions of dollars that we are leaving on the table that we reasonably could expect to increase since we're in tight times.
Certainly. And just to the points that have been made, for example, on police false alarm calls, if you start to jack up that penalty, my guess is the number of false alarm calls comes down. Thus, you don't realize the amount of money that was listed on the screen for police, but you get the benefit of not having wasted the resource of those officers' time.
I'm glad my grandchildren are old enough now, because my grandson, when he was one or so, got a hold of the phone punching the numbers, punched 911, and the police were at our house. And I don't care to pay $700, $800 for what he did, so. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have no more questions, so we can move on.
Then we will move to proposed water revenue plan and rate fix. Two things that we are dealing with right now is fixing the problems associated with the current rate structure that is simulated by Mr. Weaver, predicated on the Willdan COSA that was done in 2011 and used in 2012, to adopt a new five-year rate, revenue plan. So just a little bit of history, April 2012, city council adopted the new rate structure, the tiered structure, and adopted a multi-year rate increase. However, by 2013, we realized that we were not generating the revenue in the anticipated way that we thought was going to come in based on the COSA, based on that rate plan. And the miscalculation was due to the consultant, Willdan. And we, at this point, and those are the, that was all predicated on the COSA that was done in '11, that was used for the rates that were implemented in '12. It was a little bit complex to understand why this situation was occurring, because overall, the revenue was inching up, but it wasn't inching up as much as it should have or in the manner that it was. And the reason why it was inching up was because we were selling more water. Folks were buying more water, and the revenues were overall increasing. But we started to see, as we dug deeper and deeper into it, that the increases were coming from fire line charges and not nearly coming from the tiers of the single-family and multifamily, and even, to a lesser degree, the commercial customers. Part of the problem that Willdan had is kind of a boneheaded move, was that they were using bimonthly data as monthly data. And so as they set the tiers, where people were supposed to graduate to higher tiers, that would escalate the per-unit water cost, they weren't reaching those upper tiers.
I do think, I don't know where the city attorney went, but to the extent that we're in litigation with Willdan, we should not characterize their actions as anything less than unmitigated negligence bordering on recklessness.
Yes, sir.
Boneheaded, you know, I spilled my coffee, that's a boneheaded move. But what they did to us is beyond. But where's our city attorney when you need him? Are there any attorneys in the audience? Would you agree with me? Yes.
And can I just add, I was at the Aqua Conference this last week, which is the Association of California Water Agencies. And I had several people come up to me and say, are you from Glendale? We heard about what happened with Willdan, and we are shocked. I mean, and...
Everyone should, I mean, it's so reckless.
The few consultants that I spoke to, I don't know what I'm allowed to say with more than negation, but basically gross negligence was a word that was used to me.
Deeply damaged. What words can we use?
And by the way, from a company that is very well-respected and has been around for a really long time, it's not like we hired somebody brand-new, we thought we'd give them a chance, you know. This is, this is a company that does huge amounts of work. I don't know if it's just California, but one of the biggest.
And their professional failure is only compounded by their failure to own up to their mistake and, you know, force us to take legal action against them.
Yeah.
So now that we have the damage calculations, I hope we're going to go after them.
Yes, sir. And to that point, now that the COSA is done for this round, and we know just how deep that rabbit hole went, we will, at this point, be able to work with city attorney's office to execute some of the plans that you all have been discussing here.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment, I dealt with Willdan for decades in engineering, civil engineering work, which is a primary focus. And I would hazard a guess that they have exceeded their potential, going out looking for additional things to do like water, which is not in their area of expertise. And they just do it. They ought to get back to doing civil engineering.
That opens other issues as to why the previous administration hired someone whose area of expertise doesn't cover water.
Well, they do do quite a bit of water. And one of the things that I found out was that they just got another water rate job in the northern part of the state, and they had asked them, have you ever been sued by a client? And because the lawsuit hasn't been filed, they were able to say no. And this was sort of shocking to somebody who knows this particular company. They've been doing water now for quite a while. They were very well-known at the Aqua Group for doing water rate structures, so.
That's not their expertise that I ever knew.
Yeah, no, I'm sure a couple decades ago it wasn't, but I guess they've moved into this area in the last several years.
It's been about two decades since I dealt with them.
Yes, in the last 20 years, quite a bit of work. But they're still getting jobs out there.
They also had significant problems with the fire line calculation, whereas you'll see a very serious error in terms of how they calculated those rates and what the result was on revenue for the four-inch fire lines and higher. So as we transition forward, then what you see here is really how cost breaks out for GWP water. Maintenance and operations makes up about half. Purchased water, a little over, almost 38% of our cost of our operations GWP water is really beyond our direct control. We're buying that from Met. Salaries and benefits, as you can see, are relatively small portion of the operation. It's an engineering and infrastructure-intensive operation. What you see here goes to Mr. Najarian's question previously, where the, at the end of 2013, '14, we were, we are going to expect a $10.2 million negative cash figure. We had expected to be 1.4 negative, meaning that we had nearly, we would have nearly erased what existed in 2011. The under collection is about $8.8 million. That's the donut hole that Mayor Sinani was referring to. So $8.8 million less revenue that was collected, despite all the good work that had been done to put the rate plan in front of the community, have it voted on. The negative cash balance, reserve cash balance still exists, and we're there negative one, we had a negative 10.2, and it should have been negative 1.4. So we did bring in Bartle Wells Associates to develop a, at first, the idea was to fix the COSA, then realized that it was beyond fixing, and we needed an all-new cost-of-service analysis. So fixing the rate structure, what does that mean? We're meeting Prop 218 requirements, getting back to positive cash flow, supporting still a conservation message, which means that there needs to be some elasticity in the rate structure so that as we sell less water, because people are conserving more, that we still have the necessary revenue to maintain the infrastructure. Still recognizing that less efficient users should pay more and efficient users should pay less, and then keep the fixed rates, that element that is non-variable, that kind of speaks to the issue of elasticity, keep that as absolutely low as possible and thus maintain stability over time. The drought rates are something that would be an adjustment that we'll show you in just a second as to how that might work. And I think the theme of what you'll see is simplification, simplifying a very complex rate structure as it was previously defined. So what we look at here, the actual changes, we're more accurately reflecting the cost of service for the meter ratio, the meter size. And so smaller meters, lower cost for smaller meters, higher cost for large meters. Idea being that the smaller meter puts less stress on the system, higher meters put greater stress on the system in terms of the cost to maintain the infrastructure. Taking the tiers from five tiers down to four, and then taking multifamily tiers from three down to two. When we look at the, really, as I mentioned, the problem, they were using, Willdan had used bimonthly data as monthly data. And that completely screwed up what the tier structure was intended to achieve. And as I mentioned, the fire line charges were completely wrong, so we had to correct those. And we will be doing refunding for over collections, and that is included in this, in the set of scenarios.
So the $8 million that were off, $8.8 million that were off, doesn't even include whatever refund we're going to do prospectively?
That's the under collection, correct.
It's only the under collection.
That's only the under collection. So what you'll see going forward is two questions, the rate structure, fixing that, and then the revenue plan, which addresses the refunds. So the private line, fire line charges, we looked at those. In the, I think there was a problem in the original COSA by Willdan where they really didn't look at the one, one and a half, and there was no, even though we have only one 12-inch fire line in the city, there was no charge for that. They didn't identify. And we significantly, as you can see by 75%, reduced the 2, 3, 4, 6, 8, and 10-inch fire lines. What you'll see here are the depiction of those fire line charges. So here being the sizes, the meter sizes, here's what the actual amounts are. And as I mentioned, the amount that Willdan really focused on was here, those 4-inch fire lines. We are looking to go from a $202, or $202.37 fire line charge to $24.89. From $3.95, almost $396, down to $57. $6.33, $6.34, down to $114. And on the 10-inch line, $918, almost to almost $200. A very significant and egregious gaffe. Let the council use whatever modifiers you wish to use, because I think all of that indignation is certainly well-placed in looking at the amount of time and goodwill and good faith that we put into this project to have it screwed up this way by a third-party consultant. Here's what it looks like graphically on the 4-inch lines, where we were here pre-Willdan COSA, the number jumped up, jumped up again, ultimately was here. And right at this point, earlier in the year is where on 1/14, January 1st of '14, we suspended the charge. And here's what we're recommending going forward.
So 210, 211 was the first year that the COSA was implemented?
No, 1112 was the first.
Okay. So even before the COSA was implemented, the fire line charges were above what they should be? I'm looking at 210, 211, it's $39.08, and then looking forward, 2014, 15, $24.89. So how come?
Because costs change and the methodology. If you're going to use, for example, a 70-30 split versus a 60-40 split, or any other factors that might go into the way that you identify and pay for those costs.
Okay.
That's reflected here.
Okay.
So we need to fix what went wrong with the last COSA, so address the overcharges, address the single-family under collections, multifamily under collections, and the commercial rates are effectively treading water or have been. The rate restructuring, the impact on the commercial customer, I just mentioned that, then addressing the negative cash that we have and the $3.4 million in over collections. Here is a depiction of what you'll see take place. And the first year's impact is 75% reduction for fire lines, an increase of 7.5% for single-family customers, 13.1% for multifamily customers, 4.4% for commercial customers. System-wide, it averages out to 2.2. And you could see compounded over the next five years what those numbers look like. So again, that's just not simple, that's the compounded increase over the next five. So by way of line charts, what you see here is our capital investment for here, 13, 14, 14, 15, or 14, 15, 15, 16. And what you see is the investment that we're making. And then if we do only the structural fix, and again, I need to underscore, we need to do the structural fix, we know it's wrong, we have a COSA that demonstrates the degree to which it's wrong. So if we did nothing beyond the structural fix, here is what happens to our capital investment. It zeroes out as we run out of bond money here in these last three years. We obviously don't make the reserve policy number of 11.3 million. You see that our net operating income drops down to, I believe, $6 million. And you see that our unrestricted cash flow starts to tick up, and then finally starts to, it gets a little bit better, and then it starts to fall away again. Ultimately, the point being that if we were to do only the structural fixes, we can live there for about a year or so, but you're going to have to basically redo the rate plan that you did in 2012.
I'm sorry, so when you specifically, when you say structural fix, what do you mean?
Say again, I'm sorry?
When you say structural fixes only, what do you mean by that?
Adjusting, adopting the fixes that are in this COSA. So as we see the under collection on the single-family and multifamily, we need to make those, we need to rectify those. When you see the fire line fix, we need to bring that way, way down.
That's the structural.
That's the structural fix, to fix the rate structure. So when we look at the, we will have, we won't have money for Pago in those future years. We'll basically spend down our bond money to do infrastructure investments. The net income declines, the, at the end of 18, 19, that five-year period, we're there at $6.9 million negative cash. And not that this would happen, because I think we would be going forward with one rate plan or another in the coming years, would be that by 17, 18, if we did nothing, our debt service coverage falls to 0.7 by 18, 19. That is, you know, that's dangerous territory to be in. Obviously, we won't be going there.
To do this, so again, structural fix means bringing down the fire line fees to where they should have been?
Yes.
And bringing up the single-family and multifamily residential to where they should have been according to the previous COSA?
According to this COSA, throughout the previous COSA.
Whatever COSA. So even if we fix things and just bring them up to the current COSA, that's not going to really help in the long term, is that what you're saying?
No, it will help, right? If we were to fix, get rid of the old COSA, you have the new cost-of-service analysis, if you were to implement that rate structure, that does help.
But, so what do you mean by saying the structural fixes only, that they don't help? They don't...
The structural fixes only help you in 13, 14, 14, 15, right? And then by 15, 16, everything continues to slide down.
Okay, so...
This is we adjust rates.
And I think what you're...
And I think what you're saying is that fixing the rate structure stops the bleeding, and then.
Fixing the rate structure meaning implementing the new COSA to this year and not moving forward, is that?
Where we should have been if it had been done right by Willdan.
Because we lost that $8 million over the last.
No, I understand that.
The bi-monthly issue, the structural issue, the fire line issues, I think those are what we're terming as structural issues.
Okay.
We fix the bi-monthly, use the appropriate data, the tiering, and those are the structural issues.
Okay.
But is your question, why does it then start to slide back down?
Exactly. If this is the new COSA, if we're talking about.
Because the cost continues to increase.
This does not include any increases as we move forward.
So, that's what I mean?
Yes.
This is up to this year, fixing.
Correct.
To the COSA.
We do nothing beyond the structural fixes, that's your result.
And what are the assumptions that would bring the net income down, starting to dip in 15, 16?
All of our.
That we're going to continue to invest in CIP?
No, you can't.
Or is this just cost of service?
No, Mr. Najarian, not past the bond proceeds. Under this scenario, we don't spend anything past the bond proceeds, and the rest of it is just our ongoing maintenance and operation costs. If you go back to that pie chart that you saw.
Water purchase.
Water purchase.
projected water costs.
Water treatment.
Frequent.
Delivery. Delivery and distribution maintenance. So, the capital portion is not even in there. And just to point out also, this, as I think Bob said, this is just a structural fix, does not include any other increase, including the final year of the increase that's already been approved.
That's right. So, last go-around, the final year was a 5% increase for purposes of just cleaning the, clearing the table such as it were, we're saying the structural fix is separate from any revenue enhancement. Even though you had approved previously as a council, the 5% increase set to take effect January 1st of 2015.
Okay, so, and as part of the structural fix, we went, we went over the results as to the fire lines, you know, almost average of 75% drop. What happens to the, to the single-family and multifamily homes?
Those will, those rates will go up if, by these mails.
Okay, just give you one second.
Slide number seven, yeah, 17.
Okay, slide number seven?
7.5%.
17.
So, without quote-unquote doing any increases, single-family fees will go up 7.5%.
Effectively, on average.
That's without an increase, so that's just the starting point.
Because it's been under-collected for the last several years.
No, I recognize that, but of course.
So, you're playing catch-up.
As a resident, for them, it's shock therapy. I mean, what do you mean without any increases? There is the increase, 7.5%. So, I'm just thinking out loud. Okay, go ahead, please.
So, let's talk about additional revenue needs. What the staff recommended revenue plan is, that 5% that was previously adopted, moving that forward from January 1 of 2015 to September 1 of 2014, and then putting GWP water on the same fiscal year increase schedule with a 5% in July 1 of 15, 4% 16, 4% 17, 4% 18. It's 24% compounded increase over the five-year plan. What does that look like? Well, you see that this does provide some money for PEGO, so here, we're spending down bond proceeds, and then you're banking about $4 million a year for ultimately about a $14 million, 13.9 investment out here in 1819 for system upgrades. You see what happens with the unrestricted fund balance going from the 10.2 negative, ultimately meeting, I'm sorry?
Cash.
The cash going up to the 11.3 million dollar target that has been established, and the net income turns positive, and we're at about 5.4. So, again, 13 million, almost $14 million for PEGO, $4 million for net income positive through 1819. We meet the cash policy of $11.3 million, and we are certainly able to meet all of our debt service coverage. Bill impacts for that revenue plan. So, here you see the classification of user in a single-family context, you'll see the bills as they currently exist, here's what the bill would go to on the top box, the bottom box is what the increase is per month. So, that low user, which is a very, which is six units of water, 100 cubic feet of water at a 5-inch meter, they're currently paying $31.50 for their water bill per month, they would go up $3.16, then $1.53, $1.46, and so on. For the average user with a 3/4-inch line, 19 units of water, 100 cubic feet, they're currently paying 72 bucks, their rate would go up $7.771 a month, and then it stabilizes after that. And then the high-end user, somebody using 42 units of water, $184 a month, they would go up about 12 bucks a month. Multifamily, again, low users from 50 bucks up to about 60, 27, so about $10.10 a month increase. In the first year, the average user would go up about $34 a month, and if, presuming that gets split up among the, some of the different units that are there, depending on their metering situation at a multifamily property. And then the high users, $520, goes up $8.84 a month. Commercial, they actually come down, system-wide, as you look at a small example, small business example, they're going to come down $5.42. The medium user comes down 30, almost $35, large user comes down about $96 a month, and then things start to tick back up. The irrigation lines, you see the similar type of dynamic for the small, medium, and the large meters. What does that mean in terms of comparison with surrounding areas? BWP is here, this is the utility bill comparisons for what we know of fiscal year 1415, understanding the proposed increase that's here before you, along with the structural fix. So, BWP is here at about 65, then we have PWP Pasadena at 69, we're at 70, 79 here, with 72? No, 7?
Current, it's proposed 79.
79 proposed, and then 84 for, I believe that's CV Water District, and then here, and I believe it is at 89 for LADWP.
So, we're right in the middle.
We're right.
The five cities.
Even with the 5% increase and the structural fix, you're right in the middle. When you look at multifamily with an inch-and-a-half line, here, we're a little less, we're to the left of the middle. Our new proposed rate, $270 between Burbank and Pasadena, the folks over at CV Water District are here, and once again, LADWP to the far right.
So, we're one of the lowest costs for water when it comes to multifamily.
To multifamily, yes. Small, commercial, you see a similar type of dynamic here, neck and neck with PWP, but still second-lowest in this arrangement, and the dynamics still remain the same. And again, this is just based on what their current rates are, not any increase that they may have for the coming year. And then, once again, for large, same placement, we're here with 55.19 is the proposed cost. You see the steep climb. So, in terms of summary, with that five-year rate program, the single-family class, to the mayor's question, had underpaid by $2.4 million in water usage over the last four years. Not to say that anyone paid for them, they just underpaid based on the error in the COSA. Multifamily was, the multifamily as a class underpaid to the estimated $6.4 million. The changes, what you'll end up seeing is the bills will keep us to the middle or lower end of the scale, as was indicated in those last couple of slides. We do know that there is a 5% water bill increase in Burbank, another 5% CV Water District, and LADWP is looking at a couple of 5% increases that'll impact the comparisons with other agencies. Some other proposed changes that we would look towards, I mentioned earlier drought rates, we are looking to maintain that elasticity in our system so that as folks use less because of the mandatory conservation phases that may be declared by the council, that we still have revenue to maintain the system, so we don't cut off the nose despite the face. We try to tie the drought rates specifically to the respective phase that the city council would declare. So, when you look at how the drought rates are developed, step one, you know, is develop the amount of conservation necessary to meet each of the four curtailment stages. Then, from, you go to step two, we estimate the amount lost for net revenues expected. Step three, we estimate the drought charge and 100 cubic feet necessary to collect the lost revenue.
Isn't the fixed rate supposed to pay for that regardless of how much water people use?
Ms. Friedman, that's one of the things we struggled with, and actually, we made a decision to keep our fixed versus water consumption variable at 70-30, when a lot of other agencies are going to 60-40, and even less than that.
So, is a drought rate Prop 218 compliant?
Would be Prop 218 compliant. And the thought here, Ms. Friedman, is when the council declares a mandatory drought, the drought rate goes into effect.
That's only when we have.
Only when you declare it. When you take it off, it goes out, it comes off the bill. If we were to adjust the fixed versus variable, that's forever, we wouldn't change that. And I didn't think that, and we, as a group, didn't think that was fair, so we thought the drought rate was a better way to maintain our costs.
And we only implement the drought rate when we have mandatory restrictions?
Which is phase.
When we have an allocation.
Phase two through phase five, so it does not in effect during our voluntary phase, it only goes into effect the minute council declares.
Voluntary phase being phase one.
What we're currently in, and what we always will be in.
That's right.
We will never take the voluntary water, no-water-waste phase out. But once council puts in phase two, and if they decide to go higher to phase five, the drought rate stays into effect, and stays in effect until council pulls that mandatory off the board, reverses it, I should say.
Okay, and so that surcharge is only to make up for the loss of the reduced demand?
Correct.
Reduced usage?
Correct.
Which in turn reduces our net income.
Correct.
Gross income. And there's different stages, there's this, and who can declare that, the mayor?
The council.
Or the council?
Yes.
Are we tying that to, first, there has to be the state declaration of drought? Can there be, can there be a local drought? Let's say there was a damage to our feeder line from MWD or some groundwater issues, and we have a local drought condition, can we?
The state's already in a mandatory drought.
You know, sometimes cities, they get some.
I believe, under our, and I'll let Ms. Margarossi in, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe under our drought, or our conservation policy, you can implement that anytime you like. I don't, I don't believe there's any catch, I mean, generally, what we've said is, it's going to be pretty well right in line with MWD. If MWD is to, is to put in some sort of a mandatory conservation, the likelihood is, we would come to you and recommend that you do the same. But can you do it without that? I think you can. I think you could put it into effect at any point you'd like.
Okay, and then on the, going the other direction, can we make it an automatic at any time that MWD or the state or the county declares a drought, at whatever level, they rage it, that it automatically kicks in, sparing us the, we'd have to have a hearing, I presume, right? A public hearing and.
To take an action.
The whole, you know.
Well, at minimum, you'd have to change your code, because a code now requires the council to make that finding and take that action.
Annually.
Yes.
Not an automatic.
So, that's not it currently, we'd have to come back with a revision if that's something you'd like us to do.
So, how, how many different levels of drought are there? You said there's.
There's.
Five?
There's five, right.
We're in one?
We're in one, which is the voluntary, and we're always in one. We've never removed one, and the likelihood is we never will, and that's the no-water way.
Of course, to the more serious.
At this point in time, again, we're really, really staying close to what MWD is doing, and MWD is feeling very comfortable at this time.
Just to be, yes, just to be clear, the state.
At this time.
The state has declared, Jerry Brown has declared, the state to be in drought. There's a difference between what's happening statewide and what's happening regionally with MWD. And the reason is because in the past several years, MWD has built a lot of storage. So, I just don't, I don't want people to think that just because we're not right now under mandatory restrictions, it doesn't mean that the large parts of the state, particularly the Central Valley agricultural industry, isn't under a severe drought and really suffering. So, right now, MWD can deliver water, they're going to probably not have an allocation in the foreseeable, you know, the next year or two, I would think. But if, it may be a policy decision to try to shift some of that water to other users so that we have vegetables that we can buy and fruit we can buy from California, that might push us into an allocation. Right now, there's not a plan to do that, as far as I know, it hasn't been recommended to the MWD board, but that may happen, it may happen. So, just because we right now are not feeling the effects of the drought in Southern California so strongly, I want people to understand that it's a very, very severe drought statewide, and you're, we're seeing hundreds, thousands of acres of land fallowed, farms, especially the small ones going out of business. So, please conserve, because it does affect the water users all over the state. I don't know when you're going to see an MWD allocation. We did have a good snowpack in the Sierras, so the Colorado River's okay, but the Delta, you know, water comes from different places to go to different users.
We keep very close watch on this, so we'll be back to you right away. And the good news is, you know, under the voluntary that MWD has recommended and that we have followed with our no-water-waste, is a 20% reduction, and we're doing that. I have to tell you, from the '06 drought period, we have not radically increased our overall consumption of water in the city of Glendale, and you think about all the new meters and new units that have been added in that time, we're about the same as we were in '06. And so, that is, that's mandatory drought practices that a lot of people just kept as regular practices. So, the citizens of Glendale do a very good job, and as you said, Ms. Friedman, they need to continue to do it, and they probably need to do more, but we've been very good as a community.
Mr. Quintero?
And I want to add that the electric water meters are doing a tremendous job of measuring usage, including when a pipe breaks, et cetera. GWP is immediately able to notify the property owners, so.
I just want to say, I know the public will be very confused when we are in a drought situation, and everyone says conserve, 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 and then we say, oh, thanks for conserving, by the way, here's your little present from the city council.
Yeah. And Mr. Najarian has.
We'll deal with that when the time comes.
Always a dilemma that you face.
Here is a graphic depiction of that type of scenario, sir. So, you have this, you have the proposed bill for that average user, single-family user, and so if we went to stage one, as outlined by Mr. Zern, that amount jumps up from $79 to 94. You see coming this direction, though, if somebody is, the hard part, I think, to your point, somebody who's conserving a good deal of water already, you know, and they say, I'm already conserving 20, I'm still seeing that increase, that's the challenge that we wrestle with versus somebody who has zero usage reduction, they're seeing that very significant increase based on the drought, the drought rates. So, we're also looking at reducing the recycled water discount to 15% off of the commercial and irrigation rates, and then looking, going back to this notion of the technology that we have out there, monthly customer charges going from, or customer charges going from monthly rate to a daily rate. The takeaway, I know we're going to run short on time, so takeaway for you here is a summary. These are all the other options that we have before you. The structural fix that we've outlined, that, system-wide, is a 2.3% increase, and that is no revenue enhancement. So, the total increase, system-wise, is 2.3. Option one is what staff is recommending to you, that is the compounded 24% increase. Option two is a 5.2222 increase, so the proposed revenue is an increase of 13.7, and you can see how it goes down. I would direct your attention to option four, which would be the existing 5% increase plus a 4, plus a 3, and here's what those options look like in terms of meeting the needs of the utility. All of them are Prop 218 compliant, all of them, except for doing only the structural fix, make sure that we have adequate debt service coverage. All of them, except for the only structural fix, provide some degree of PEGO, as you see this line going across. Here in these rows, you see what the net income is, where we are negative, and then get to positive numbers. So, being able to do some type of revenue enhancement is a, as you might imagine, a general positive for the utility. These areas, of course, are dark, because this represents a four-year rate plan, this represents a three-year rate plan. Net cash reserve is important to look at here. You can see where we are negative, and as those negatives are erased, and how we get to positive numbers based on the impact of these rate plans. The five. of these rate plans. The 5-4-3 leaves you with a, less than a million dollars in reserve. But, in full disclosure, and all candor, you don't have a reserve today. And so, while it is good financial prudent planning that would really give the council the opportunity to decide whether or not you wanted to implement that drought rate, for example, or to deal with some local emergency, you don't have that luxury. But, again, to the extent that this would be, all of these come at the expense of ratepayers, and you want them to be sensitive to those ratepayers, we have the full spectrum of basically doing only the structural fix to doing what we would hope to see in terms of a recommendation, to something that is a little bit more of a moderate type of increase over the next couple of years. By way of making it right, what we're talking about is addressing both our problems with the fireline charges, quite frankly, and the information that was provided to Willdan, and certainly Willdan's errors, both on the rate structure and the firelines, and then simplifying the system overall. A lot of that means that we're going to have to go out to the community and re-deliver the messages that we did in 2011, 2012. So, we will be looking at 120,000 Prop 218 mailers. We are asking that you set the ceiling as the staff recommended rate. And while, based on some of the comment that you're providing here today, my expectation is that you're not, maybe not universally supportive of that staff recommendation, if we do set that as the ceiling, it gives you the opportunity, when we have the actual hearing in July, to consider anything beneath that ceiling, versus setting it at a floor, you're locked into that floor, and you can't consider anything above, because it's all about what's contained in the notice to the ratepayers. We are looking at several community meetings, beginning in June, and moving through that whole month, and allowing us to take all of that input, and everything that we garner through any number of outreach media, so that we can incorporate it into the overall rate program for the July 22 hearing that is proposed.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of the outreach and the letter, is there a way to make it clear, and I'm sure there's legal language that has to be in that letter, but is there a way to make it clear to people that the rate increase, which we adopted, what was it, two years ago?
2012.
2012. So, yeah, two years ago, really never went into effect for residential users, because what they're being told by council candidates, by other people, is you had this huge increase, and now they're proposing another increase. Is there a way to make it clear that that increase was never implemented as it was designed? Because I think people may not understand that that increase didn't go into effect. And the increase that went into effect for the commercial customers were refunding anyway.
Well, part of, the 218 notice, I'd have to defer to city attorney, but part of the media outreach, public outreach that you'll see, is an effort on GWP's part to show especially our single-family ratepayers what they should have paid over that two-month time.
Can we make it clear that they did not pay?
Yes, exactly.
They did not have an increase in those two years?
I think we can note that it's to correct errors in the previous study. I wouldn't want to, I, my only hesitation in saying yes to your question is that I don't, the notice is a requirement of law, and I don't want anyone to say that we're trying to underplay what the increases are in the notice. The notice is a specific requirement. We are increasing the rates, and as a result-
Can there be a cover letter?
I think-
Because people heard us do a rate increase two years ago.
Yeah.
And now, what they're hearing is, we're about to do another rate increase. And the truth is, that that first rate increase was not implemented.
Yes.
And people need to understand that they're not being told, they're being told other things by other people out there, and they need to under, I think that it's important for the public to really understand what's happening and why we're doing this. Can there be a cover letter?
Mr. Mayor-
On that official letter?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, in our 218 letter, and we can go into more detail, we have clearly stated in there that this was as a result of a flawed COSA by Willdan. We say it right in the letter.
Right. But, the flaw could have been that they paid too much. They don't necessarily-
We did. We said we undercollected. We talked about the categories we undercollected. We talked about the degree to which we undercollected, which has necessitated a new COSA, which has changed the rate structure. But, we'll look at it one more time. It's obviously not out.
It needs to be something that's easily interpreted by people.
Absolutely.
And undercollected is kind of vague. What does that mean for me as a homeowner?
All of the other, all of the other information-
So, we'll get together with- I mean, just looking at it real quick, I can just read briefly from it, Ms. Councilwoman Friedman, and said, it says very clearly that the new-tiered residential multifamily rates were not generating the forecasted revenue. So-
That's still very, I mean, people still may think that they made a, paid a 20% rate increase, but we didn't collect enough money. I think we need to find, and I know it's general, because everyone's a little bit different, but we need to find a way, in that letter, even if it's a cover letter, to really explain what that means.
Well, we'll take a look at it, for sure. And I just want to, I don't want it to, I want to be clear that the notice will say that it is a rate restructure with a rate increase, and anything else we'll put in to try to address those concerns.
If history, if history is any indicator, folks will get their information not from our Prop 218 notice. They will get them from all of these other things that we'll be doing. And one of the things that we'll be doing is through GWP, showing them that they did not pay a set amount, that they underpaid that water bill, because we didn't charge them because of the flawed COSA. So, through all of these other non-legal notices that we'll be providing, and social media, for all of its ups and downs, actually is a very effective tool to put folks in contact with us. We will do precisely what it is that you're talking about. I just don't know that we can do it effectively in the confines of a legal notice. But, in reality, I don't know that the legal notice is what's going to make folks' minds up for them.
And there's a caveat to any detailed explanation that we provide our residents. Remember, whatever option we end up at, unless it's the structural fix only, the real increase, the increase that the residents will feel over the next five years, if we take the worst-case option, which is option one, will be for single-family units, 34.9% compounded, and for multifamily units, 40.7% compounded. For the best option, option four, it will really be 23.4% compounded, and multifamily units, 29.2% compounded. I don't think that the math, well, structural fix going in at 8.6% for single families, and 14.4% for multifamilies, and then on top of that, we have the next five-year plan, right?
I'm sorry, is that against me?
The structural fix will bring us up to an 8.6% increase in the fees for single-family units, and 14.4%-
If you're taking the 8.5%.
I'm sorry, 7.5% for single families, and then you have the compounded number, and the multifamilies is 13.1%. But, that's only just the structural fix. On top of that would be the option one, two, three, or four, whatever it is that we end up with. So, you need to add the increase to single families and multifamilies on top of the eight point, I'm sorry, 7.5%, 13.1%. So, in reality, the numbers that we end up with, depending on which option, and I'm taking the two extremes, the worst-case scenario, the best-case scenario, even that is open to interpretation-
Sure.
As to worst and best for whom. It's 34.9% single, 40.7% for option one, that's for multifamily, and 23.4% for single, and 29.2% for multifamily for option four.
I guess I don't understand where you're getting the 24% or the other number.
And, okay. The option one, when we're looking at 5-5-4-4-4% increases over the next five years?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm looking at option four.
Okay. Well, we can go with four. Doesn't matter. I mean-
Page 39.
Yeah, page 39.
Slide.
Right.
Let's say it's a three-year plan, five, and then four, and then 3% increases each year, which compounded, I guess-
12.5 versus the 12.
Right. It's, well, it says total, which is 14.8% increase.
That's the structural fix?
Oh, that is with the structural fix.
That's the system-wide impact of the structural fix.
Okay. All right. Much, much better. The end is, the world is not coming to an end. Okay. All right. Then, that's fine. If the numbers clearly reflect the structural fix, you know, included in it, then, you know, that's fine. We are entitled to tell our residents that, listen, you know, whatever increase that you thought was implemented was really not implemented. You never paid that amount. And I think they should know that, because once these numbers hit them, they'll need all the explanation possible.
We're probably the only city that has not increased, that did not collect increased rates over the past few years. I mean, every city I know of was increasing their rates 5%, 6%, 8%. So-
Right. For them, though, for the residents, again, it's, they're just going to say, my bill went up by 8% this year. That, they're not going to, they're not going to really, and you can't blame them. They're not going to look back and say, well, in reality, I had a windfall the last two years. That's just the nature of human mentality. Yes.
Question. You know, we have maybe 4,000 or 5,000 new possible meters coming in, new units. Can we grandfather in all our existing customers and charge a different rate for all the new meters that are being installed? Because the marginal cost, I mean, if you're doing a cost of service, discuss the marginal and analyze the marginal cost of providing service to those others. The marginal cost for providing service to an existing home is nil. But, the marginal cost of providing to all those new units is significant.
I, well, yeah, I'm not sure that that's true. And then, number two, I'm not sure that you can charge someone a different, the same ratepayer a different, different charge, both under Prop 218 and Prop 26. It seems to, I haven't thought of it too deeply, but it seems to violate those cost-of-service principles.
It's like a Prop 13 argument, though, isn't it?
I will say this, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, and we're very preliminary in these kind of discussions, and we're working with the city attorney's office. We're looking at the potential for a water impact fee as it relates to the impact on the overall system, which I think is doable. Other cities have done that, and so-
Say that again.
It's a water impact fee.
Development impact fee.
It's like a development fee as the impact to the overall infrastructure. So, we've talked about, just as you said, a new single-family home doesn't put the stress on the system that, you know, a 200-unit building does. So, is there a way for us to accommodate that? So, we're in the very preliminary stages of that, but we plan to review that further and-
Let's do that quickly, before everything in the pipeline is built, and there's nothing left to determine what the impact is going to be.
One more, I hate to beat a dead horse, but, so, option one, when we're looking at 5-5-4-4-4, would literally the residents, the residents this year would feel, would have a 5% increase. It wouldn't be an 8 plus 5, right?
It would be, in full disclosure, as we fix those rates-
Right.
The average impact on your typical single-family, correct me if I'm wrong, typical single-family customer is going to be 8.5%.
No, no. So, but, so, option one.
Yes.
Let's look at option one. This, I'm a single-family resident. My bill will go up this year how much?
Single-family resident, your bill, if you did, option one would go up, slide 24.
No, 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 not in dollars.
I was talking about the percentage amounts, Steve.
Percentage wise.
Slide 24.
This year, how much would it go up? So, in the upcoming year, how much would it go up?
About $3.16.
Percentage wise.
Full percentage?
Hold on. I'll do it for you right now.
Option four, wouldn't it be 5%?
Well, that's not, that's what I'm thinking.
Because it's the structural, it's the structural-
If it's not, it's not the structural, it's option one, five, it says-
Slide 24.
I got it.
So, that shows you the- It shows you single family with proposed structural and-
Go up 10%.
Option one, 10%.
10%.
For the first year.
Okay. So, why does it then say 5-5-4-4-4 for option one?
That's what I'm saying, is that if you go, the two points, if you look at slide number-
That's including commercial?
Everybody.
System-wide, that's the impact.
System-wide is 5%.
So-
We need to be clear, because if we're going to explain this to our own residents, and we're going to make a decision, we need to be very clear about it.
If you look at slide number 17.
Okay.
So, you see what the structural fix only-
Yes.
And it does not increase, it does not do any of the rate increase. Single-family, 7.5 is the structural fix only.
Okay.
And then, you add in a 5% rate increase.
Okay.
And for purposes of what you saw on slide 24, that is a general customer account. That's, so, it's a little over 10%.
Okay. So, when you add up five to five, that's 10, plus another 16, that's 26%.
Another 16?
I'm sorry, another 12. So, that's 22%.
It wouldn't be the other, oh, an option one?
Yeah, option one.
Yeah.
10 plus 12, 22%.
Right.
If you add the structural fix only of 7.5% to the 22, and I'm not even compounding at this point, just straight percentages, that's 29.5% just for the, you know, just for option one. Yet, the total under option one shows 26.3%.
Right. So, if, but if you did, I guess, yeah-
That's not even compounded. I'm assuming 26 is compounded. So, my number should be much higher.
Sure. So, that would be fine on the 5-5-4-4-4. If you did the 5-4-3, right, that's a, you know, straight math, it'd be 19.5% increase. So, that's the structural fix, the 5%, the 4%, the 3% over the next three years. That's about a 6%, a little over 6% increase, 6.5% increase a year.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I have to leave.
Yes.
Because I actually have an MWD board meeting today that's pretty important.
You're going to miss all this fun stuff.
But, I will say, if you're looking for direction today, that I'm for, of course, going forward with all of the noticing and all of that, but I do not support option one. I think it's too much money to ask of people. We made the mistake of hiring Willdan and having a bad rate structure, and I don't want to slam people and shock them next year, in the next couple of years, with rate increases. So, I would support some of the other options, but not necessarily option one. I just think it's too much money to collect from the residents at this point.
For purposes, can I ask then one clarifying question? That for purposes of the notice, are you okay with using that 5-5-4-4-4 as the, as the ceiling that goes out in the notice? That way, you're free to discuss anything beneath it?
You know, I think it alarms people. So, but I'll leave that to my colleagues. I just, if we're not going to adopt that, why alarm people and have them think they're going to have this huge rate increase when we don't have the intention of actually implementing it? So, I'd say no. Let's not do option one, even on the notice. But, my colleagues might feel differently. So, if they're, want to do that, that's okay, too. But, I'm sorry, I have to run, and I will watch the rest of this on TV and get caught up in City Manager, and I'll see you at 3:00.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Friedman. So, can we go back to the math?
Sure. So, I'm just taking 7.5, which says, the single-family fix-
Right.
Plus 5-4-3, which is 12, which gets you to 19.5, divided over 3, because it's a three-year increase. So, that gets you to 6.5, is that right?
Even-
Per year?
That would be the averaging.
That's the averaging.
It'd be the average increase-
yearly average.
For those single-family users. And then, based on their usage, it could go up or it could go down. But, I think at 6.5, considering that they didn't pay the increase over the last couple of years, if you averaged out 6.5, if you averaged out 19.5 over five years, it comes down even more.
I, I'm, you know, so, all I'm trying to figure out is how we came up with these total increase numbers on slide number 39. Because, you know, what I'm trying to figure out, okay, so what's the increase? What's the bottom line? I thought it was 26.3% plus the 7.5%, but then I was told, no, that includes the structural fix. But, now, I'm being, I'm not, I'm not sure what I'm being told.
If you, these are system-wide.
Entire system.
Okay.
So, the individual classifications may be higher or may be lower than that.
Okay.
So, as you saw, the commercial, for instance, the projection is, is it's going to be somewhat lower. But, the single-family goes up because, and the multifamily even more, because those were the ones that underpaid the most.
Okay. So, can we have the totals for just single-family and multifamily?
We can, if we, if we can break that down, we can get that for you. Yes, absolutely.
I think we can't, I mean, it's hard to even consider anything without having those numbers, because that's where, that's where the pain is going to be felt the most.
And, Mr. Sananian, during the course of our outreach, as Mr. Ochoa alluded to, we have just a whole lot of other things we show them, including actual bill examples, where we take bills and show them, this is what the customer would have paid. We take and show the graphs from the underpayment to where they will be in relation to, with the new proposed fees, whatever option that proposed fee is. But, system-wide, we can give you, at least we can give you to those three categories, low user, average user, high user, and give you an idea.
And, yeah, and specifically, please-
And you see those in the graph here. You'll see where we have, you know, it's about 10% that first year.
Which, which, which page is that? Which slide is it?
Slide 24.
Okay.
So, that's the structural plus option one. And these are just three categories we've, we've come up with.
Right. And then, of course, the problem with this is that we have, this is probably the right way to measure it, because it's aids, dollars, and cents. The other, it's, well, it differentiates between the users in terms of how much they use, as opposed to whether they're a single-family. But, that's more, much more sophisticated way of, but explaining this to people, you know, then, if you, if you tell a resident, well, this is, this is what it is, you know, if you're a low user, this is how much it is, average, well, people are going to be, well, which one am I? Am I a low user? Am I, you know, for- I, you know, for, for purposes of doing PR, for purposes of selling this idea, I don't know how helpful this is. So in addition to this, I think we should have some percentages as they specifically relate, especially to residents, not businesses.
We can do it.
No, but for us too, so when we're considering this, we have those numbers in front of us.
And maybe, Mr. Sananian, if we added a column here where you would see in just dollars and cents, and maybe not so much even a percentage, some people like it just plain dollars and cents.
Sure.
Where you go from today to 18, 19, you know, you're looking at $9.40. It's a $9.40 increase over that, that five-year period.
Okay.
And then you can even average that over the five years, and it comes down to, you know, whatever it is, $1.75 or $2 or whatever it is. People tend to relate better to that, I think that's, that's a very good point. Even percentages sometimes get people, what does that mean to me? What does 5% mean? I don't even really know what my bill is. So we'll make sure, at least, in, when we put these out to the public, we've got those numbers that are very tangible, so, okay, I'm looking at, you know, where are you? And, and, you know, what are you, a family of four, living in, you know, a 2,000-square-foot house? We can give you a pretty good estimate, but as Mr. Ochoa said, if you bring your bill with you, we'll tell you exactly.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about it.
So with that, that really concludes our presentation.
This is, again, the two questions, the rate fix, and then any revenue increase. We have rather little latitude on the rate fix, the structural fix, and adopting a new COSA and recognizing what was done with the old COSA. And then you have full latitude tied to various consequences and scenarios for the revenues. So at this point, what we are asking is for your permission to commence the noticing for the July 22 hearing. That will start our public outreach in earnest, and then for some direction as to what rate plan we should put onto that notice, recognizing that whatever rate plan we set on that notice, we cannot go north of that. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments about which rate plans should be considered, which ones should be included on the notice?
I'll go with option one, we've got to build our reserves back up. I don't know what the future holds on it, and I think we have to go with option one.
Okay, exclusively option one? I mean, this is just...
As presented.
Oh, you mean the ceiling of option one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ceiling.
All right. Mr. Quintero?
Well, in terms of the note, I certainly have more reading to do. In terms of the noticing, I don't think there are going to be enough votes for option one, so I don't know that we need to go to the top tier of possibilities. A little hesitant to notice that large an increase when I don't think council's going to go in that direction.
So perhaps option three, Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, that's certainly high enough.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Option four.
Or four. This is just for the notice.
Yeah, just for the notice.
Are the, is it required for the notice that each year be specified? Can we go over a four-year term and set a number and decide later how that would be 5-5-2-2 or 5...
You can't have any increase above, in any year that's above the increase in that notice, so you couldn't say 5-2-2-2 and then have, in the notice, and then come back later and actually adopt something where one of those out-years has a higher number.
Also, wouldn't the staff and administration want some predictability in terms of budgeting, to know which year, how much money, and so on and so forth?
So the proposal is 4-4-4-4?
Well, that's the ceiling that...
The ceiling.
We have two, two proposals right now, one is option one, one is option three, is the ceiling.
I would, I would support option three, but I'm, still, I'm very hesitant to vote for anything. I'm very, very interested in the water impact fee issue. I really see a large connection between the thousands of units that are going up and the component of cost that's being put in here. For notice purposes, I'll go with option three.
Thank you, and I'll go with option three also. I think Councilmember Friedman indicated that she's not, she doesn't want option one either, so I think we're ready to, do we need to vote on this?
I just want to be clear that option, while I was talking with my staff, option three, as a notice, that'll be the ceiling, it will preclude option four from being adopted by the council, because that's got that 5%.
Okay, well, in that case, in that case, I would not support option three as the ceiling.
Well, Mike, would it, if...
You could also do option three and hybrid it, and just do 5-4-4-4, and then if you get, the council wants to do 4-4-4-4 or 5-4-3, then we could do that as well.
That sounds good.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What I, I guess my recommendation would be to do a hybrid of three and four for the purposes of the notice.
Okay.
Make it 5-4-4-4, and then if the council wants to come back and then do either three or four, then they can do that.
I'd be fine with it.
Okay, 5-4-4, 5-4-4-4.
Correct.
So can we...
I need motion on that.
Yeah, anyone move?
Second.
No, no one's moved.
Oh, I'll move it.
Okay, second. Mr. Quintero?
Second.
May I roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Eric Sananian?
Yes.
We don't need a motion adjourned, do we?
Yes, we do.
Do we?